Thank you. Good evening. We've already opened the meeting before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, "The public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast." It is being livestreamed. It's also being recorded so that it can be shown on MCTV and our website, starting usually tomorrow. And we do have people joining us in a Zoom audience. Just a reminder, if you are in the Zoom audience, please make sure your video and your microphone are off. Thank you. And we have opportunity for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but we have not received any requests by anyone to do that this evening. So I guess we can continue with important events.
So the first event is again, the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee will hold its next meeting at 4:15 on Wednesday, February 3rd. I did want to let everybody know that Wednesdays are half-days across the district and tomorrow, despite the weather, will remain an early release day in remote learning. And I have sent that communication out to the staff earlier and then the community just before the meeting. The next virtual meeting of the Friends of Turner's Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School will be held on Friday, I'm sorry, will be held on February 8th at 6:00 PM. Monday, February 1st marks the first day of the second semester for Turner's Falls High School. On Tuesday, February 2nd, the Hillcrest School Council will be meeting at 3:30. On February 8th, the Friends of Hillcrest meet at 5 o'clock. And on Monday, February 15th, from Monday, February 15th through Friday, February 19th, will be the school vacation week. And as a reminder, this Friday, there is no school in the district for the district's turnaround day.
And actually, one other thing that I thought it might be good to add at this point, as well as later, at our February 9th meeting, we will hold the public hearing on our preliminary fiscal year '22 budget. So we will be advertising that, but I just thought I'd mention it now as well. Diane?
My apologies, I didn't get this superintendent back at his request. We are also scheduling a virtual Special Education Parent Advisory Council meeting. It's sort of an organizational meeting and presenting the annual rights in special education on Wednesday, February 3rd at 6:30 PM. And I will have a flyer and a link on the website tomorrow in relation to that event.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything we might have missed? Okay. Thank you. I think generally, we have our student representative report at the moment. I see Audrey. Hi Audrey.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. So I don't really have much, but this Saturday, the Western Mass Regional Student Council E-Board is holding a virtual roundtable. So normally, we would attend the Blue Bonnet Diner and each member of our council, or whoever would go, would sit at a table and then E-Board member would go to each table and would talk about different topics of discussion, like student council-related. But this year, they're holding it virtually on Zoom, so breakout rooms will be used. And then the WMASE E-Board members will just like switch their breakout rooms to talk about different topics that include how to fundraise during a pandemic and how to bond with your council virtually. And then I have one fundraiser announcement, I guess. The class of 2022 is selling large mason jars with flowers. And then four homemade cookies for $25 and a small bouquet and two cookies are $15. And this is through the local business Flower &amp; Flower, run by TFHS alumni, Michaela Battistoni. So that's all I have.
So someone who was interested could just contact a member of that class?
Yeah, and then I also know Ms. Ficula-Curtis is their advisor.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Audrey, could I ask a quick question? I know that you probably don't have access immediately to that. Is it regional or state student council?
Regional, the Western Mass.
Okay, I was just curious if either regional or state, and if between you and Haley could just inquire about this. Do you know if the student councils are doing any work with regard to issues of equity, race, sexism, you know, any types of discrimination within the councils and their breakout rooms in the regional meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but Cece, she's one of our E-Board members for our council. She's on the regional board, so I could talk to her too.
Great, thank you.
Get back to Haley to come back. Yeah.
Yeah, or you could, either one of you guys could just send me an email that I know one of the things that we're trying to do is coordinate with some of the other local schools to connect students together, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But I can bring you in the loop by responding to your email if you can find that out.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Bill?
Audrey, I talked to you a month ago about the six-town regional study board. And I just wanted to, and I haven't, obviously, we hadn't had any connection since then, but there is a link off of the Gil-Montague website to find out more information. And I'm sure Brian would be happy to assist you in finding out, or Joanne, who, I don't mean Joanne, Tina, I'm sorry, who helped set that all up. But anyway, that's a way you can get some information and then even have some input through that, our website.
Okay, yeah, that would be awesome.
So thank you if you do take the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Audrey. Nice to see you.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, Audrey.
Okay, Brian?
Okay, so as far as the commissioners update, as you know, in Massachusetts, the commissioner, I'm sorry, the governor had eliminated the overnight curfew restrictions, so the businesses no longer have to be closed between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM is the only updated change. And the continued restrictions for the number of people who can be inside at various close-contact personal services still remain in place through at least February 8th. So I would expect that by the time we get to the February 9th, school committee will either know whether or not that's remaining in place or he's going to be stepping backwards again one way or another. I do know also that the city of Boston is finally moving to Phase 3, Step 1. As far as the data in our local towns, one of the things that I wanted to point out is, you know, Montague has continued to decline in cases and perhaps more importantly, percent positive tests. We're now down to 2.65%, so hopefully that data will continue in that direction. I do have a concern with Irving being close to Orange and Athol, which are both towns that are in the red, that although they still remain in the green and are not considered to be high-risk, I will be consulting with the Board of Health when we read the data this Thursday, if their percent positivity is still very high. As far as the facilities, we expect to receive an updated air exchange report for the high school and middle school this week. We have not received it yet. I don't know if the snow will interfere with anything. I do know that I didn't have the opportunity to catch up with Director Cummings today as he had a day out of the district, but I do know that he did have a consult with the contractor. And again, the timeline was supposed to have had that by this week. So that will be an important document for us because we want to make sure that that work is done. As far as staffing, we still have posted for a food service director, two positions for the medical waiting rooms. We do have a certified nurses' assistant for the high school and middle school posted. We still have a position posted for a shared special education teacher. And we are in the process of interviewing for a long-term substitute for a power professional at Sheffield. There are some additional positions that may need to be filled as a result of granted leaves of absence, either short-term or long-term. But until we're able to confirm those and post them, I'm not able to necessarily share a list of those. Again, encouraging everybody to take advantage of the access testing. Now, with my family, a couple of times, and it was very quick. I was there for less than five minutes. And if there hadn't have been some sort of screw-up with my email, I would have gotten my results back in less than 24 hours. But I searched around for it and came back with a negative, so I'm pleased with that. So, and those are, I'll share those again. I've shared them in all of the emails that I've sent out, with the exception of the most recent one, but we'll share that again, along with the information on the governor's travel restrictions that need to be updated so that people can pay attention to those. And hopefully, you know, we'll get adherence to those from families in the community. I do also want to say to the families in the community, as well as staff, thank you all so much for the time that you have taken when you have a concern about either a close contact or a positive test in your home, that people have been very proactive about getting in touch, you know, with the administration and/or with their nurses right away. And that's been very helpful in trying to make sure that people are getting themselves quarantined and tested so that we're not dealing with spread of the coronavirus within the school community. So thank you. That's it for my, for the superintendent's report chain.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments for Brian?
Mike?
Thank you, Brian. You checked in with Heath and asked whether he's talked to the Montague Wastewater Control to look into sewage testing. We don't need to discuss it now, it's just, I know that more and more across the country, it's being done. If you could add that to his huge pile of inquiries.
As the committee may know from the last meeting, we have put in an application. I don't think we've heard back yet, but we have applied for what's called pool testing. And we do already have the Binax testing up and running, which is the rapid test for people who are symptomatic. So Mike, can I ask you again, what's it called? What kind of testing?
Sewage.
Okay.
They test the effluent coming out of the building. They've done it in dormitories in colleges and had great success with it. From what I've read, they can anticipate in a couple of weeks before there are any positive tests, they can anticipate outbreaks or have been able to, I mean, 100%, but, so testing the effluent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Joanne, Business and Operations Report, please.
Sure. You all know that we had the building condition assessments done for Sheffield and Hillcrest, and we are getting started on the high school now. So the consultants will be out at the high school on next Wednesday. I believe it's the 3rd to tour the building. Heath and I have already met with them. And so hopefully, we'll have that report in a couple of months. Be too late for this year's capital budget request, but we'll have it for next year. E&amp;D was certified, and so the certification is in your packet. It was certified at $616,009.10. And you can see that the cap on that form, the cap is about $1,065,000. So we're well underneath the cap. There's about $400,000 worth of space there for us to move. And the last item I have is the preliminary budget vote, but that is in business.
Okay, and we will certainly cover that shortly. Any questions otherwise for Joanne at this point? No, okay, thank you, Joanne.
Welcome.
School committee reports. We have the warrants to approve the GMRSD Accounts Payable Warrant, number 3118, dated 1/27/21, for $168,589.63. Accounts payable, again, are paying the bills, things like telephone and supplies, materials, things like that. We also have a GMRSD Scholarship Warrant, number 3119, dated 1/27/21, in the amount of $7,300. And again, scholarships that are awarded to graduating seniors are payable for the second semester. So we receive requests for those to be paid when students have or are beginning their second semester of their freshman year. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve those, either separately or as a package.
So moved.
Okay, Haley?
Second.
And Heather? Any discussion? All those in favor? If we can indicate?
Looks unanimous.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, going on to business. The first item is review and discussion of potential adjustments to remote hybrid learning. Ryan, if you want to start us, then I'm sure others would like to join in.
Yep, so we were very pleased to welcome back our Phase 1 students who started yesterday. And I had initially put in for us to begin in full hybrid on February 4th, but due to the need for some of the facilities items to finish being wrapped up, or at least that would be the preference, because it does definitely make our building safer and also warmer, because we don't necessarily have to have windows open all over the place, that we needed to have a couple of extra days. So I pushed it back by just two days to go full hybrid across the district on Monday, February 8th. I do recognize that that'll get us started before vacation. I did also want to mention that each of the principals have completed surveying their families and will be sending out information about what cohorts, whether it's the A cohort, B cohort, or AB cohorts this week. The high school will be the latest to arrive, simply because they're changing to second semester schedules from first semester schedules, which means those cohorts needed to be rebuilt for grades 9 through 12 from scratch, because almost all of those students are in different classes. And it was important to be able to get the information to Ms. Menard so that she could align, first and foremost, with siblings so that siblings would be at least in the same cohort, heading in on the same days. And we anticipate that those should be in the mail by Friday. And so, you know, obviously, everything is completely a work in progress and things could change at any moment, but given the trends that the data has been trending down, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to stick to this timeline. So, you know, as I have done each week, reviewing the data on Thursday into Friday, I will send out a message to families, you know, confirming the timeline. And if we have that updated air exchange report from the high school, middle school, I'll also share that with families, with the staff, and get that posted on the website as well.
Okay. I think the, I felt that the committee as a whole might want to just have a bit of a discussion about the idea of remote as well as hybrid learning. I think at last time, we got some information, but I think it's something that I think we should continue to look at and continue to discuss as people have questions or ideas or things that they might want to bring up in this respect.
I know one of the first things that we've been able to do, you know, and we do have a lot more, the entire process of trying to educate children this year literally will be a process. You know, to give you an example, we had gotten together with folks early on and put together plans back as far as August. And since August, almost constantly taking feedback from families, in particular, principals holding extensive meetings with staff to be able to get insight and recommendations for how students are going to move through buildings. And we've made a pretty significant number of changes because we've learned as we've gone on. And so all of that input really is helpful. We can't be responsive all the time to all of it, but it is all helpful because any suggestion or recommendation that we have to potentially help students get into the building more safely is always welcome and something that we should always be looking at. So one of the things that I want everybody to be aware of is that while we establish these routines, I know that our staff is going to be able to make really strong contributions to making improvements as we go. And as those safety procedures might change, we're going to send that information out to families and add it to our school plans as we go. So I don't want to discourage the input, the thoughts, or the feedback, because it's always going to be helpful. And we're going to continue learning more about how we can do this. I'm just pleased that we're headed in the direction of finally getting a larger contingent of our students on campus.
Bill?
I just want to reflect on some of the discussion that we had, I had, about the test ratings and performance in the last meeting. And I want to be sure that it is not construed as being an attack on any effort of your staff, in particular, the teachers. I truly believe that the teachers have extended their efforts beyond what they ever expected to have to be required to do. But the conversation really is around the whole world of the virtual educational promise or maybe failure. I don't mean failure at all, it's difficulty. And so I just wanted to put that out there on the record that certainly I believe that our teachers are trying to do a great job and are performing to the best of their abilities and also expanding the nature of their teaching beyond whatever they were taught to get their license. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Great.
Haley?
Yeah, I wanted to play off of what Bill was speaking about and just, you know, I wanted to clarify that my comments at the last meeting were an off-the-cuff reaction to the data I was doing. And my intention was not at all to vilify teachers or insinuate that the results that children are showing are due to a lack of teacher effort. I think the academic backslide is concerning, but I count it as, you know, like an unavoidable side effect of the pandemic. I think that people are in survival mode. I wouldn't expect to see academic gains or even maintaining the status quo right now. I just think that grades and test scores are not where the focus should be at our level or even higher up. And I think the message I wanted to get across was that I'm dismayed that we're telling secondary students that they're failing courses and that elementary students are being graded at all in remote. I think we've asked them to do something that's not natural to them and it's not an equitable environment. Everybody's learning in a different environment and they have different supports in their homes. And now we are telling a large number of them that they're doing a bad job at it. And what does that achieve? So I just don't want our students to learn to hate school through this. That's my big fear. I don't want to do that to kids. I don't want to do that to families right now. And I just want to make sure that we don't claim that remote is a standalone alternative to being in person. It's not all bad. It's gotten us through a rough patch and we've discovered some tools that we'll probably continue using after the pandemic. But it's not been adequate as the one and only offering. We need to do better. We can't take the stance that just because some students are doing well, that it is an acceptable alternative. We've got too many kids struggling and too many kids are just disappearing. So I think Brian is correct. Like, we can be using our collective energies and creativity and make sure that we're providing in-person connection to those who need it. We're going to have to be constructive and, you know, ever-evolving in our approach. And the staff are really going to be instrumental in moving us in the right direction and, you know, pulling in those kids who just can't access education in the remote environment. That's my piece.
If I could add just one piece to that, Haley, I think you'll be very impressed with the work done by elementary team leaders in thinking about that. I was able to attend the meeting, and I will talk about that in addressing learning loss at that next item on the agenda. I've been very impressed with the initiative of teachers to begin dialogue around, how can we recover the loss of learning? And I love where the elementary team leaders started, so I'll share that later.
Thank you. I think another thing that's come up when I've had discussions with different people in the community that often, from the beginning, people have said, you know, it's really hard to have students on the computer all day long and completing all of their tasks on the computer. And I can understand, you know, especially for young children, that can be challenging. But I know I've heard in these discussions about other communities, and actually, I think I've heard some of it in our district too, that I think maybe people need to be aware of that often, teachers are accommodating that by sending home materials, perhaps paper, where some of the activities can be done on paper, not just answering questions on the computer. Because I know our teachers are very capable and very talented at figuring out the best way to do things with their students. And I think that just doesn't necessarily get out there. And maybe some, I'm hoping the other, the half-day that we're having on Wednesdays will enable teachers to share among their teams and other teams different ideas they've had in this way that have worked, that seem pretty successful with students. And I think maybe, Brian, that's something maybe administrators could encourage teachers to share about those ideas.
Absolutely. I thank you to the committee for helping us to, you know, gain Wednesdays at secondary level for addressing issues of student support, providing additional support and time for teachers to work, you know, in this really challenging environment. And the next step really would be to take a look at how we can address issues next of screen time, you know, in the Monday through Thursday time, given that we've already addressed Wednesdays, while simultaneously keeping our education at a level that is keeping students moving forward.
Thank you. Cassie?
One thing I'm just, I think, a little bit more interested to know about, and I echo everything Haley and Bill had said about the previous meeting, but when kids are back in person, I recognize that technology is still going to play an important role in their learning. I'd be interested to hear more about, you know, if learning isn't working at home on the computer, just changing the environment and putting them in a school building and expecting the same, it's probably going to be very similar. So I just, I guess I want to know, maybe this is a question more for admin, how we're going to support teachers to be able to provide both without expecting them to do two different jobs? You know, because I do think that is a concern. I know, and I've been open about, my youngest has not been able to access technology over the computer. And so if he's back in hybrid, if he's just sitting at a desk doing the same thing, I worry that it will be the same thing, but in a school building. And I expect from just working with his teacher this year, she's been amazing about trying to differentiate and do as much as she possibly can over the computer. But I think that would be interesting to know a little bit more about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I, I think we will just continue to have this as a standing item of business, just so that we're aware of any adjustments, any changes. We can keep people informed in the community as well as ourselves. I think that's always helpful. Thank you. Next item is the fiscal year 22 preliminary budget. And we have to vote after Joanne enlightens us. We'll vote this evening. Again, it is for a preliminary budget, not the actual budget, but a first kind of reading. Does that sound right, Joanne?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
So once, once we vote the preliminary budget, then we continue working on the budget. The state numbers will come out, the town's affordable assessment will change. And we'll have the public hearing like Jane had mentioned. So we built the budget and it was an unbalanced budget. And so we talked about it last week. How, what do we want to vote? Do we want to vote the higher number that is our expense? Number and assume, keep our fingers crossed that we're going to receive more chapter 70 aid. Or did we want to reduce some positions or reduce some expenses in the budget and vote what we had for revenue? And we decided that we were going to keep our fingers crossed in the hopes that we do get more chapter 70 revenue. So we're voting the higher number of what we talked about. So. I increased it in the chapter 70 assessment. By about 250, about maybe $300,000. We also moved $150,000 in our transportation expense, the transportation revolving account that we're going to establish this year. Later in the year, once we have the transportation revenue, we'll move that. That'll be available for next year. I did, since I put this together for you and sent it to you, I did hear from the town. Of Montague that they are increasing the affordable assessment by about $100,000. So once we add Gil in there, that's about $116,000 increase for us. So that takes away from some of the need of what's, what I plugged in there for chapter 70. Tomorrow, the chapter 70 numbers will be out and I'll have a better idea. So I'll be able to bring that to you next time. So for now, we just need a vote. To approve the preliminary operating budget for fiscal 22 of $21,838,204.
Second. Okay, we got Bill and Heather discussion.
And this budget is using $150,000 in E and D and that should be part of that. Vote also.
Okay. Any questions for Joanne at this point? I know we've discussed the budget. Pretty consistently at our meetings, which is I think really important. But if anything else has occurred to people now that we see the preliminary. Mike?
Yeah, not a question really, but just to make the point that one reason we don't have a lot of questions is because the picture. Has been much more positive than we might have feared. The state has found a way to, to keep us up and not delete anything. So if, if, just in case, and. Just in case the community is wondering, I mean, there was a very thorough rationale behind our decision to. Think that there might be more money coming. It wasn't just, you know, hey, maybe we'll get more money. But Joanne was very casual about it, but she did a lot of work in making sense of all of that. Just want people to know that there was that and that, yeah, the reason there aren't more discussions and more hand wringing is because we've. We feel like we, you know, dodged the cannonball. So thank you, Joanne and Brian and everybody else involved with that. I guess really Charlie Baker too. You know, thanks.
So one of the reasons that we are keeping our fingers crossed for more chapter 70 revenue is. We have heard that the state may use fiscal 19 or fiscal, fiscal 20 enrollment, a year ago's enrollment numbers from October 1. So October of 2020, rather than October of 2019, rather than October of 2020. That we just passed. Normally, when the fiscal 22 budget comes out, they would use this, just this past October's. Enrollment to calculate that, but we're hearing that they might. Use the year before. And if they use the year before, then we will see a bump in chapter 70. If they use the current year's enrollment to do our, do the calculation. I'm not expecting much of anything at all. So fingers crossed that tomorrow, when the numbers come out, they'll have used. Even partially use the prior year enrollment numbers.
Really, you know, those. Every school district across the state has dealt with declining enrollment, every public school district. So there's been huge lobbying from the superintendent's association directly to the legislature about that really consistently leading up to this, starting as early as November. After people began to see. Numbers of kids, in particular the younger grades, moving to homeschooling and other opportunities that would skew the, the. October 1st enrollment numbers for every school district in the state. And so. You know, they, while the commissioner wasn't able to say anything, at least we do understand that SE is on the side. So. It may not be actually the FY 20 numbers. It could be something, you know, some algorithm that they create that's somewhere in between, but I think it's highly unlikely. That they're going to base it on this year's enrollment for any school district in the Commonwealth. Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. Bill?
When you, this is kind of a stretch, so you can cut me off if I really get carried away, but Joanne. You brought forward the, as part of your argument that, and Brian just mentioned it, that increasing numbers of kids. Are homeschooling, which then brings up automatically, but not necessarily in a budget discussion. How are these kids being assessed? I think that the superintendent in the past has some input into. Parents' plans to homeschool, what, what their curriculum is and blah, blah, blah. So encourage. It, it would get to the question of. If they're successful, do you think kids are going to continue to be homeschooled? Do you think that it's really a COVID related decision so they don't have to deal with? Remote and they have more control over what their child's education is? Did any, are any of those thoughts valid in this discussion?
I think they all are.
Agreed. And I, I do think that it will be incumbent upon us. To create an environment that will be attractive to them to want to come back. To the school district, like every school district will need to, and maybe we'll pick up some of the homeschooled folks from other school districts. I remain optimistic simply because of the quality of. The faculty and staff that we have here and. The opportunities that hopefully we'll have in the future for programming that I believe that we can pull people back into the district. Now, whether or not that's a real reality, I, I don't know, but it is something that we're going to work at, Bill, for sure.
And I think Diane might have some information about homeschooling and how it's handled.
Yeah, just, just quickly. We average in the low 40s in Gil Montagues in my time here for homeschool families and this year we're over 80. So we have doubled our homeschool families. There is a mid-year, we, we have an application, we have a residency requirement. We, we've done some controls to sort of tighten up on the documentation so that we're really clear on these. Families seeking homeschool approval are in fact resident families because there was some movement. There's been a lot of movement with families in general, but so many times families will, will homeschool for religious purposes. So that is something that's been a consistent theme. And then there are families who will homeschool because they're sort of just seeking an alternative. So they, they're part of a homeschool collective. There's a number of organizations and we try to provide resources to families so they can connect with other homeschool families. And as I said, there's a mid-year and there's an end of year assessment. And so. But other than that, there are statutes that sort of protect people's rights around homeschooling. And so, you know. It's a balance between allowing people to exercise that individual choice and ensuring that we are sort of meeting our responsibilities.
Thank you.
And I do think we're going to see families coming back even this past week as we are preparing to go hybrid. We are having some returning homeschool families and we want to welcome them back.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything about this item to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 22? In that case, we have motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We have it unanimously. The next item is school choice participation for the 2021, 2022 year. That's also requiring us to vote. The document is in your packet. It's policy JFBB school choice. And each year about this time, we have to determine if we will continue to participate in school choice for the following school year. And as the document explains. Part of that is that by May 1st of each school year, the administration determines how many slots are available. If the, we are considering withdrawing from school choice, then by June 1st, we have to hold a public meeting to discuss that issue. So any thoughts on school choice for next year? Mike?
Yeah, I, I go ahead and move that we continue with the hunger or with the school choice.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Bill, thank you. Any discussion about it? Okay, we've done this for quite a while now. I was wondering as I looked at it, how long ago school choice was instituted, quite a while ago. All those in favor of continuing? Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. The next item is a faculty on payment vote. Brian, would you like to explain how this works?
Yeah, I think Joanne can.
Oh, Joanne?
Probably give a better explanation. But we have had a staff member. Who has put in for the longevity buyout.
So once an employee has more than 20 years of full-time employment with the district and who tends to take advantage of this three-year buyout. Can request it. And you approve it. And I believe we can have up to three or four. Individuals approved each year, but we only have one request this year. So this does increase their pay for three years. Typically, when we see people take the, this buyout, they retire toward the end of it. Of receiving it. And so it's sort of a way for us to know who might be looking at retirement soon. Doesn't always happen though.
Right, when I, yes, when I looked at it, I remembered that it, it isn't necessarily required.
No.
So it often happens, but not always. Bill?
Can you refresh my memory as to what the purpose of, what is the buyout? What are you buying out?
It's basically just another longevity payment. They only get it for three years and then at the end of those three years. All of their longevity payments go away. So teachers. Do receive a longevity payment once they've been here a certain number of years. And then this longevity payment is optional. They can choose to take this or not choose to take it. And once they've received the third payment, this longevity stops and the other longevity they were receiving also stopped. Which is why we tend to see some retirements at the end of it because then their income is going to go down.
Because they, so the longevity part of it is that they've maxed out the scale.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Right.
Compensation for, it's like a stipend at the end of the year.
It's for, well, having given many, many, many years usually. It isn't even accessible unless somebody has been here 20 years at least.
Yeah, I got that. Thanks.
Anything else? And do we, I'm not sure, Brian, do we need to mention the candidate's name?
It's, it's in the public document. I don't, I don't know is that we have to, I just think we have to approve, the committee needs to vote to approve the buyout.
Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the longevity buyout.
Thank you, Haley.
Second.
And Bill seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimously. Thank you. The next item, discussion about planning to address learning recovery from the 2020, 2021 school year.
Sure. So if I could, I just want to provide a little bit of a summary because. As the school committee knows, for those who have been in various executive sessions or. Just been receiving communications from us that obviously our focus is pretty much entirely on. Getting back into school and refining the, in particular, the safety measures, getting communication out to families that we need as quickly as possible, answering questions. To help them understand what the expectations are and also to be able to hear from them their needs. Nonetheless. Many staff members and all of the administrators and all of the teachers have been beginning to work on. Developing ideas to address learning loss. And so we're examining. Three basic phases at this particular point. Short-term considerations, those that would take place, say, within the next month or six weeks. Midterm considerations, things that might come a little bit later on down the road during the school year and then. Longer term possibilities and things like extending the school year in some way or another. This was the thing that I wanted to share, the elementary team leaders meeting on Monday. I was pleased to hear that the elementary team leaders engaged in a really thoughtful discussion about the importance of routine to elementary students in, in learning. These teachers engaged in a thoughtful discussion of how important it was to make sure all students become acquainted with the very different routines that hybrid learning. And the pandemic will bring as they arrive to school. The commitment of these teachers to ensure. That this important consideration is addressed with students and reiterated frequently as they return to school is exceptionally important and something without the input of those teacher leaders. That it's easy for administrators working on other logistics to lose sight of. So I'm very pleased with. Their attention to this matter as being. Really probably the most important element of making short-term progress. Is that for those students who come into school, making sure that we're going to take the time in this stunted environment. To get them to feel comfortable being in the building, get them to feel comfortable with things looking different, get them to feel comfortable. With cleaning and eating and understanding the parameters of socializing and again. Feeling loved, even if they can't necessarily hugged or touched in the same way that they might used to be doing that. So. I, I think that was very impressive and I really look at that as being a short-term. Approach to addressing learning loss. In addition, each school. Has scheduled more frequent student support team meetings to allow the dialogue around problem solving plans for individual students. And thank you not only to the student support teams, but for. Teachers who are participating either in those student support teams or in individual student meetings. I wanted to say thank you to Diane Ellis and each of the principals. And the participation of the student support team staff for their extensive and ongoing work in identifying already and continuing to identify those students. Who most need extended assistance to make up lost ground. Wanted to also add that as far as first steps. That high school students are, many volunteers and student leaders are currently being organized to tutor middle school students during, during their gap period. And other times such as potentially using time that is now provided on Wednesday afternoons. After school or even evening times that the high school students might be available to extend that to students. So. I'm excited about the prospects of peer-to-peer communication and support as being another area that can help us in the short term. And while made this, this may be too short of notice for us to pull off. I also wanted to thank our director. I also wanted to thank our Director of Teaching and Learning Christine Lamosh for beginning to formulate a possible vacation school extension for February vacation. We're exploring this possibility now, and really will need to make a decision by around Monday, February 1st, to see if we could even make this possible. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank Christine for the, laying the groundwork for us to even be able to look at this while we're trying to get students back together. You know, the data remains, as it is in trending in the right direction. It would be lovely to have an opportunity to have students on campus during the February break if they wanted to, to be able to potentially provide them with transportation. Doing some things that are fun for them, you know, having it be at a different time of day, like maybe doing it from 10 to 2 or something like that, so that students don't need to wake up at 7 o'clock in the morning to get there. But that's something that we're going to explore, as challenging as it might be to put something in place. We do have the resources of the, of the existing ESAR grants, and we are expecting to get more ESAR money that's extended from the most recent federal stimulus package, which could be used for longer-term programming to potentially address these needs. And as I mentioned in the previous meeting, that this is going to be a standing agenda item, and as things come up, that we have the opportunity to do, or if we have an opportunity to continue to gather ideas from groups like P-RAC or from parents, we are going to do some outreach, and I'm reconfiguring the survey from the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee to reach out to parents to actually gather more information about what kinds of times and you know, might work for them to extend their student learning, and you know, do they definitely see their student as needing an extended learning opportunity to put them in better position for next year. As we know, there are a number of students who, for some reason or another, are really doing well, probably because of the hard work of teachers. That remote is going okay, and for those students, one of the first pieces that teachers are going to be needing to assess is, even for those kids as they come in, what's their, what's the state of their social and emotional well-being? And that's going to be a really important for consideration, a really important consideration for us in terms of getting students rolling, like, as opposed to, what did I do for my summer vacation? You cross out summer vacation and starting off, what did I do with my pandemic? To try to get a baseline for students to see how this has gone for him or her, and what, what we can do to help, to help them get themselves back to normalcy. And I believe that a number of students are going to be really excited to, again, see their peers and very excited to see their teachers. So that's just a basic summary of what we have planned so far, and just looking at short-term stuff that we might be able to make happen. And then, as soon as we get kids into the building and get some of these things resolved, you know, we'll be able to make a decision around whether or not we could do something really extensive on February vacation, something small, or we can't pull anything off in that amount of time, but we're going to give it a shot, because why not? It falls into the category of like, let's do everything that we possibly can, even though we're kind of shorthanded, we have some really bright people here, and I think that we, we could conceivably work some things out.
Thank you. Any, Mike?
Thanks. I'm really concerned about seniors, juniors, sophomores, and their recovery. And yeah, so I don't know if you have any more information on that. They don't have time to recover. I mean, I I know, not going to comment, I'm, for all of the efforts we're talking about. And I know this is a preliminary discussion, so I'm not going to, oh, that's not good enough, we're, we're just starting this out. But for the people who are about to be sent on their way, I'm not satisfied that, that they've been prepared. So we really need first priorities to figure out what's going to happen with the seniors and the juniors who've missed a year. I mean, you, the, the, the agenda item is the, is making up the education loss for 2021, but we haven't even started with 19 and 20 yet. So we've got, you know, so far, a year and a half of education loss to deal with. This is a pretty big job, but especially for those people who are about to graduate. I mean, I've made suggestions in the past, I'm not going to get into that, that this is for the administration, large decisions. But if there's any thought of allowing them to continue after this year, so that they can make up the stuff, we need to be looking at that now, right away, as soon as possible. You, you don't need to answer that one way or the other, I'm just making that.
Agreed. Yep, agreed, Mike, you know, in particular, so grades close this Friday for, for the high school first semester, and really being able to have an idea starting out, not necessarily with a foundation of where they're at in terms of level of preparation, but the first thing is to find out, are they, are they meeting their graduation requirements? And then looking there, really for, in particular for seniors and possibly juniors, you know, around, is there something that we could conceivably do on the February or April vacation for those students? Is there a course that they can fit into to make that course up in second semester is also advantage, an advantage that the high school has, because they do, it depends on whether or not they have a section in the second semester, and then looking at what the other alternatives might be really has to be a priority. So we're definitely on the same page.
Diane?
I just wanted to offer just a small example of some of the outreach that happened last year. I know that Stacy, as our family engagement coordinator, we sent a, we contacted every senior family member of the class of 2020. We sent a letter out to them, sort of connecting with them, trying to find out if, what their post-secondary plans are, getting them connected to our alumni network, including the, you know, the link on our website and a Google form of how they can be part of our Turner's Falls community. The letter was addressed from, from Stacy, but also from Ms. Menard, and from Principal Menard, and from Beth Fortin, who played a role with those seniors. I know this year, we had a student who turned 22. The transition plot process for turning 22 for a child or a young adult with disabilities wasn't as accessible, so our team at the school is continuing to engage with that student and helping that student make linkages to post-secondary education, even, or post-secondary resources, even though she's no longer on the rolls and is our student, so to speak. I imagine those creative, that's just a small example of sort of the creative things that are happening. I know that teachers are connecting a lot with those seniors who were failing, and we're seeing some signs of, you know, optimism. I do think having students with those relationships that Brian talked about, making connections, being in school, that, you know, we're, we're going to start to see some recovery efforts, and it may mean having to continue some supports into the summer, so that those students can be better positioned to launch, if you will, because I think that that launching process is important, and it's been curtailed.
Thank you, Diane. I believe I also saw something about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education having a meeting to discuss graduation requirements this year. I'm not remembering if it was today or in the future. Do you remember, Brian?
Yeah, the Board of Education was scheduled to meet today. I believe, I can't remember if it's tomorrow or Thursday, but we do have a follow-up with superintendent's phone call or Zoom call with the commissioner that's happening either tomorrow or Thursday, but we usually get that in writing as well. And what they were doing was taking a look at the commissioner's recommendation that MCAS testing not be used for accountability purposes this year, but just be used as a diagnostic tool. So when we look at students in, you know, grades three through 10, having that data up against the curriculum that has been implemented over the last three months of the previous school year and the first six months of this school year, should give schools some sense of where students in those grades are, are at, and what kinds of gaps we might need to fill, beginning from 10th going into 11th on down, what we need to do to have them better prepared for post-secondary study. But will also give us a sense of whether or not we're going to be able to do some of the things that I have recommended and other members of the committee, as well as teachers have recommended, which is the idea of focusing on emphasis, an emphasis of teaching to people, and not so much an emphasis on driving through content right now, because it is, again, that relationship that is going to be more important than anything else in terms of keeping kids engaged, keeping kids interested, and having them rebuild their own confidence in the face of, you know, having to learn under really difficult circumstances.
Thank you, right, I didn't see that as an alternative to the things we would like to do for the good of the students. I was just curious where they were.
Yeah, we haven't gotten notification yet, but they did meet today to supposedly vote on, you know, the overall. I know that they have also changed the competency determination requirement for current seniors who needed to still pass the MCAS class. They, the commissioner has already indicated, I don't know whether this came from the board vote, but that those students can simply pass a course identified in that content area to be able to meet that requirement, rather than having to pass the MCAS before the end of the school year. So, you know, that's, that's an indication of, of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education understanding the challenges of the context that children are learning in, and being sensitive to it, and trying to get them access to be able to move on without, without being put in a situation where, you know, they're going to be held to these rigid standards that's that students and schools might not be able to achieve because of these circumstances. So I'm hopeful that we'll get better, better news in the next day or so from the commissioner's office.
Okay. Bill, did I see your hand?
Yeah, you did. I don't think this, I want to be most supportive of the younger student population needing the recovery. I admit that the upper levels in the secondary are also needing additional support, but I think traditionally, in terms of education, this, the colleges and universities have had to adjust a lot of their program, and over the last 20 years, it's not something new. And whether it is a change from the old days when community colleges around the state were essentially picking up high school kids that needed some introduction into higher ed before they went to the four-year UMass or whatever, but in any event, we're not going to be able, we may not be able to mitigate every, every grade level to the level that we would appreciate, but I think other educational institutions are going to jump in and manage some of this too. And perhaps some of our models now are, and thought processes are based on what higher education has done in the last 20 years.
And Bill, just so that you're aware too, and that's an important point, back as early as April, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which also accredits, accredits higher education institutions, as well as private schools and international schools and vocational technical institutions, they, they brought in four high school principals and guidance counselors in the spring, and so they, you know, to talk to us about, at the very least, you know, many students were in the process of applying for college back in March and April, and waiting for acceptance, wondering about financial aid, wondering if college was even going to be there, so, or be in person. So they have been involved from the get-go, and the seven regional accrediting agencies across the country have been involved in that conversation. So I think one of the things that will be helpful to us is for us to reengage with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges to get some information about where they, they and the other six accredited, regional accrediting agencies are at with higher ed, and, you know, has higher ed been making that adjustment? You know, we want our students still to be successful, but I do agree with you that that's a, that's a pretty significant point of leverage for every student entering.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, I anticipate we'll just continue to have this item on our agenda and continue to get updates as we go through the rest of the year. The next item is discussion about issues of equity. Something else that we would really like to keep on our agenda as we go through. I think there's many different ways of looking at equity, and I think Joanne had a suggestion of something that she had seen some families had questions about, that she might be able to give them some information about?
Sure, I can just talk about the district, or some of the schools in the district being CEP, which is Community Eligibility Program, which provides free lunch and breakfast to students at Hillcrest Sheffield and at the Middle High School, but it doesn't allow those free meals to Gil under our normal circumstances. And so the state has come out with PB, EBT cards that are sent out to all families that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And the families of students that attend any of our CEP schools would automatically get one of these cards, even if they don't themselves qualify, because they attend a CEP school. But the families in, that attend Gil would only receive the PEBT cards if they personally qualify for a direct cert, or if they would qualify for free and reduced lunch and have filled out the application. So I know we are coming up with an application to send out to families, so that way they can complete it, even if we really don't need it for anything except for the PEBT cards this year. Because when we come back into hybrid, all meals will continue to be free, just as they are in the summer, because we're running under the summer program. So, and I just wanted to give you a little bit more information about the Community Eligibility Division, which is, it provides free meals to schools and school districts in low-income areas. It provides the nation's highest poverty schools and districts to serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to enrolled students without collecting any applications. Instead, the schools adopt the CEP, are reimbursed using a formula based on the percentage of students categorically eligible for free meals based on their participation in specific means testing programs, such as supplemental nutrition assistance, which is SNAP, or temporary assistance for needy families. So, in order for the schools to be eligible for CEP, they have to meet a minimum requirement of 40% poverty, based on direct certification of those programs that families might be in. And we looked at adding Gil into that mix, and when we add Gil into the mix, it knocks the entire district out of eligibility. And so that's why we weren't able to bring Gil into that. We're going to look at the numbers again this year, and if, you know, our numbers have changed, it's possible that, that we could have a district-wide CEP, including all of the schools. My biggest worry about just sneaking in under the wire would be if in a couple of years, when we have to get recertified for that eligibility, it goes away, and then all of a sudden, everyone has to pay for food, and guess what? We won't be getting money. You know, once people get the free lunch, it's, it's hard to get used to paying for lunch again. So that's going to be a complication anyways, when we get into next year. But for now, Hillcrest Sheffield and the high school, middle school all have that eligibility. So when families from Gil go to the middle high school, they'd be eligible for the free lunch also, just because the school is eligible. So I hope that helps explain it. And we submit data to the state, and the state sends out the PEBT cards. We're not sending them out. And all we're doing is sending information about who attends the CEP schools and who at Gil is eligible for free and reduced lunch. And that's all we submit, and the state takes it from there and sends these cards out. But we've gotten a lot of calls, and, and we've seen it on Facebook, so I just wanted to share a little bit of that. Hopefully it helps.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have anything else under this large umbrella? Any issues of equity that, that, I mean, there are always plenty, I'm sure, but any particular things at this moment they would like us to discuss or consider? Mike? But any particular things at this moment they would like us to discuss or consider? Mike?
Nothing specifically to discuss this evening. But I think it's time, maybe we should revisit the statement and talk about building that into, you know, our general work. Because it was pretty clear and it's a good basis for us to proceed. So it'd be nice just to revisit it in a future meeting soon and start thinking about how we can work those things into our daily existence.
And I think it will be important along those lines, Jane, if I could share just a little bit of information about what, what we've been doing is, as area superintendents and even within the work that's been done in our own district as a result of dialogue that's taken place over the last couple of years. As you know, at the high school, the high school and middle school staff had had the opportunity to have extensive training through teaching tolerance and have done some programming and continue to do some programming around the four pillars that are central to that. And while the elementary staff has not had the experience of having the same training or similar training, they have requested it. However, at the elementary level, one of the things that they have done is to intentionally integrate, in particular into all-school reads, literature that is geared toward helping kids to understand the differences that we all have between one another and from a very young age. And up through the month of November, those all-school reads on various topics around issues of diversity were done weekly and although some schools are continuing to do them weekly, they are committing to do them at the very least monthly. And so those are relatively small steps in that direction. And it, one of the things that I know that we have here as a potential resource is the Culture and Climate Club that was started at the high school. And in our conversations, we were fortunate enough in our regional superintendent group to have Darcy Fernandez representing us. She's the superintendent in Athol on the State Superintendent's Committee for Equity. And one of the things that we're trying to do regionally is to find a way to get student leaders trained, in particular at the secondary level, and then begin a process of working that down to middle school and then having those students be prepared to lead dialogue among younger students. But trying to connect students, those student leaders who are interested in being trained in this across schools, especially given the fact that we've now had exposure to working extensively remotely. It doesn't necessarily have to be an in-person field trip, even when we go back to normal. But me and Superintendent Fernandez and Superintendent Modesto from Frontier have talked about connecting our school groups, you know, the Culture and Climate Club from Turner's Falls High School with a club doing similar work at Athol High School, a club doing similar work at Frontier High School in hopes that whatever we do for training, that we wouldn't be doing it one district at a time and that maybe we could pool our resources together to get our students better trained to be leaders in the community. And that leadership is also going to, I've spoken with Ms. Menard about bringing Quab and mediation in to train some of our students in active bystandership. Because one of the most important things in dealing with issues of equity is that they arise in the school. It's really, they don't always happen in front of a staff member. It's not always brought to a staff member's attention. And so it's really important to empower kids with the language, the tools, the phraseology that they need to be able to intervene in those circumstances and make sure that they have a pathway for reporting that it occurred so that circumstances can be monitored. So there are some good resources out there that we're exploring and hoping to bring those in. And that includes looking at another organization or other organizations that we're hoping to be able to create a contract with to do two things. One, provide us the opportunity to assess our capacity, first as a staff, second as a community, to be able to engage in those conversations and, and/or programming. Because if you assess capacity first, then you have an idea of how far we need to go and what steps, rather than just jumping right in, you know, and trying to engage in a conversation and having it fall apart for various reasons. So I'm hopeful to get that up and running as early as March and to have an opportunity to have some people who might be willing to engage in those conversations in the community at large. And certainly am excited to begin working with student leaders on this to help influence students, you know, really across the district and to be able to keep an eye out for one another so that no student has to go through the experience of dealing with, you know, a bias incident or outright discrimination from a peer.
Thank you. Anything else on that topic? Okay, thanks. We will continue to have it on the agenda. The last item under business is we need to vote to approve a request for leave. And Brian, if you could explain that a bit more?
Yeah, it's a relatively odd, one-off kind of circumstance that I, I was surprised that I didn't have the authority to actually vote or to make the decision myself unilaterally. But as I reviewed with the attorney, we redacted the name and identifying information because the request is of a personal nature, it is of a legitimate personal nature. And it just happens to fall into a category that needs to be approved by the school committee as opposed to the superintendent according to the contract. So I needed to bring that to the school committee. I did put the letter, although I didn't put it in the packet to protect the name of and identifying information for the individual. I did put the letter in the executive session confidential information so that you're aware of what the individual circumstances were.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve that request for leave by a staff member?
So moved.
Okay, Heather and Bill seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And if you would, I'm sure Brian notified the staff member of our vote.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from January 12th that need to be approved. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Haley?
Haley, thank you. Second. Okay, Heather, thank you. Any discussion about the minutes? All those in favor? Thank you. As always, any agenda requests, please let Brian, Cassie, or myself know. We generally meet to do agenda planning on a Tuesday early evening, a week before the next meeting. So please let us know. I've also been making notes of anything that we want to continue or to have on the agenda on an ongoing basis. Dates for the next scheduled meetings, we have a meeting February 9th. We're still meeting virtually and the 23rd. And again, on the 9th, we will also, as part of that meeting, we will have the public hearing on our preliminary fiscal year '22 budget to provide to the community. There will be, it will be advertised in the paper and we'll make sure people know that well ahead. Anything else? All right. In that case, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
We're all enjoying this, but it's perfectly okay. Bill moved. We have a second?
Haley seconds.
Haley, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, thank you all very much. We're adjourned.